It's seven o'clock. Call this meeting in order to stand for the pledge, if you please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, let's not waste any time. Let's start with the Chamber.
All righty. Well, we asked to be on the agenda for a couple of rea- for basically the reason for the decision by the board that was communicated to us that you wanted to charge us five dollars for each vendor participating in Spring Fling. In fact, we haven't really received any formal notice to that effect. My wife was called by Mr. Gunner and notified that you guys have made that decision. Our concerns are, one is if there was a concern, why wasn't it raised ahead of time so that we could participate in the discussion in advance instead of being notified out of the blue? Second, the fact that we even haven't even been formally notified of the change. So we've got some concerns about why the decision was made and second, of course, of why we weren't even notified to be part of the decision-making process.
Well, there was a cou- we were, it was a couple of meetings that we discussed it and so there was an opportunity, but you have to know that the meeting was going on. So I'll give you that. I will explain it very quickly and I'll let Glenn kind of get over to as speak to. We're trying to find every way we can in the town to make some revenue to help the taxpayers. And one of the things that was brought up is the Chamber is not actually a Fairhaven Chamber totally. It's several different towns. So that money goes out away from our town. We're figuring that maybe we could, we could get into that, that operation as well. I mean, we're, we're just trying to make, we're trying to make revenue for, in any way possible. Not was one of the ways we thought. It's that simple. If you want to add to that or...
See, look at me, huh? Okay?
Well, it's, you are the revenue guy.
Well, just, I, cause I'm the guy that says, show me the money. But it's, it's one where it was, you said Spring Fling. We don't care what's Spring Fling, Apple Fest, whatever we do down there. If there's, if there's vendors that come in was the thought. And I mean, again, I'm just, it's probably the conversation that we're having after the fact. It's good, but better late than never. Let's have the conversation. The thought was that if they were getting, and I don't know what a vendor pays down there, twenty-five dollars?
I think it's about thirty, thirty-five.
Depends on the size of the space and whether it's prepaid or for a certain day or after a certain day.
But the thought that, at least from my end of it, was thinking, hey, look, is there a way? Because it's getting tougher and tougher to cover the trash removal, the mowing, the gr- the mowing of the grass. And I know it's not just for the Chambers, for multiple things, concerts in the park and everything else. And we were thinking, I said, geez, is there a way that we can take and save a couple hundred dollars? It's not, we didn't think it was, five dollars was, was big money. If someone's, if someone's paying a set amount, whether that cost is one that is added on. I don't know when the last time the Chamber said, hey, look, you've been paying this for your place for so many years. Things have changed and there's a thing called inflation and everything else here. Why not get it? So it wasn't intended and I apologize if you, if you blindsided or whatever. It was more of just a, kicking an idea around, I thought, and saying, hey, look, here's a way. It looks like we could do something that would help the taxpayers here. Wouldn't be overly burdensome to say that maybe if five dollars per booth. Now, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but if, we're not talking about a nonprofit that comes in and you set them there like the grade school tries to raise money for their classes and things. I don't know if you charge them or not, but I said, we're not talking about taking five dollars from someone who's, who's doing some kind of nonprofit work. What we were thinking more in terms of, it's like the one that they, the vendor that does the fried bread dough or the sausage and hamburgers and, I mean, you probably pay the five dollar increase on your first two customers of what they come in. That was our thought. We don't know whether it was wrong thinking. Go ahead.
Well, one of the things we've got, we've thought about is we maybe have thirty vendors on a good year. And a lot of those are some elderly people that are trying to make a few dollars to maybe sell a little bit of stuff that doesn't own a house. I'm not concerned with, you know, with the food vendors. I agree with that. That's fine. What I'm looking at is the people that sometimes they don't even bring in thirty-five dollars right there. It's kind of a break even. Well, now they've come up with seven or five dollars or something. And, you know, and the Chamber, you know, we talk about money going to other towns. The only money that goes in the Chamber is when we donate to the, to the coves, the food coves and whatnot. We do that. The other, the money other than that doesn't really go anywhere unless somebody comes to us and has a hardship, you know, then we'll see what we can do. But we support, you know, the Fairhaven concerned and the Castleton concerned and Benson. That's, that's the only beginning of the money that we take in. It goes. It's all volunteer. You know, years ago, you know, the fence around the park, that was part of the Chamber. We probably raised money for that. The gazebo, that was the Chamber. So we just figured that it's a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a punch in the nose to just come and blindside it and say, well, you know, hey, if it's trash, I'll dump the cans at the end of Spring Fling. If that's a concern, I'll, I'll take it and get rid of it myself. But it's the fact that, you know, is everything that goes on in the park going to get charged accordingly? I mean, you know, the concert in the park and my biggest concern, the car show that doesn't even use the park other than a couple of vendors in there and we can move them out of there. So what's the plan for the car show?
Actually, that is the park.
Outside the park?
Yeah, that, that side of this.
It's Greg's lawn, most of it.
Well, about a third of the car show is on my property.
Right. But to the sidewalk is, is part of the park.
Well, that's, you know, that's, so the street's part of the park too. Maybe that's for the park because they park in tree. So, I mean, negotiations to move the car show. I mean, if we have to, we have to. If we're going to get charged for that, we're going to get charged for every car. Is that what the plan is? I mean, I just want to wear a rack.
That's fair enough. I, I don't know that anybody's thought through that.
I wasn't thinking car, charging you for individual cars at the car show.
What do you guys charge the cars?
We, we don't charge any of the spectators that don't go to the community, that we charge fifteen dollars a car. So that was, oh, if it was to start charging the cars, then, you know.
And our thought, and I know at least my thought was, not saying that, hey, have we even, are the vendors saying? Absolutely not. Five dollars is a make or break decision for them?
We'll find out.
Cause I mean, that's, that's the, I just don't know.
We couldn't get on the agenda two weeks ago and we were under a deadline to get these forms out to notify people so they could start to, you know, planning for, for that weekend. And a lot of those vendors are, like you say, they're mom and pop, you know, craftspeople that, you know, if, they're getting charged thirty dollars for a ten-foot space. If they make fifty, sixty dollars, you know, five bucks is a lot. And I remember back about five years ago, I think it was, a year or two before COVID hit, our costs had gone up and we'd eaten it for a number of years. So we went up by five bucks. And the firestorm of people, you know, calling and complaining, and I think we lost several vendors because of it. And so, you know, it's, it's, you know, like you said, the...
And I didn't want you to think that we're just picking on the Chamber. Heck, we'd even just recently gone from two-dollar punch tickets at the transfer station to a dollar punches because we thought on the, on the ones that they were, we were looking for that kind of revenue. I mean, we're looking everywhere.
The last thing in the world we want to do is have less, less, you know, events in the park. Every time there's, there's stuff in the park, it's, it's worthwhile. So we don't want to chase people away, but maybe there's a compromise someplace here. Sure.
Roy, you know, I'm from Castleton, Lakeside News. I have been a part of the Spring Fling since I first started the newspaper. And I remember Gordy, Gordy Foster, how many hours that guy put in to the Spring Fling, volunteering hours and hours and hours. And everybody since that time that has, you know, taken his place when he passed away has done the same thing. There's tremendous amount of work in putting this together. And I have seen lean years when you wondered and you could tell automatically that the vendors weren't doing well because of one thing or another. And I know of two vendors that were very, very big spots past the Spring Fling and they're no longer there. This is a great publicity for Fairhaven and to make it any more expensive for anybody, I think is the wrong route to take. Spring Fling is along with Memorial Day services. And the amount of people the combination brings into this town and they go all over the place. I know they do it by gas, food. Sometimes they go into the other stores. And it is a big benefit to this town to have it. Compared to Memorial Day services here, because you have a lot of people enjoying the whole entire day here, compared to the Memorial Day, for instance, in Potting or in Castleton, there's no comparison. You have the people here. It's a big, big affair for the town of Fairhaven. And to make it any more costly for vendors, I think is a big mistake. I myself promote the event in my newspaper with some full pages. And those full pages, I take upon myself to give them a very good deal so that they save some money on the, the end of advertising. So I think it's, you know, just a travesty to that for such little amount of money that, that this is happening. Thank you.
So, yeah, we're, when you're, when you're looking at trying to find more money, I understand that. But you're talking a hundred and fifty bucks and we're considering spending over a million dollars to put some green space on the east side of Main Street down in downtown. I think we've got our priorities mixed up and...
Well, let's ask you a question. Let's, let's see. Can you guys take five dollars off your charges? And then it wouldn't cost anymore.
We, you know, Roy was saying, he does some advertising for us. We advertise Apple Fest. We advertise the car show. We advertise the lumberjack stuff and we don't ask for anything from any of those. We do the pork potties, you know, and whatnot. I mean, a few years ago, we had meetings down at the Legion talking about possibly for the parade, maybe the Chamber could sponsor a float or something. And I told him, I said, you know, we might make two hundred dollars of the whole day. You know, and, and as Roy was saying, I mean, it's not just that morning up. I mean, I'm there in the park at five o'clock in the morning that day of, you know, doing stuff days beforehand. You have to get it ready. And the last two years, I haven't been there, but it was when places got done. But previous to that, of the COVID years, I was always there at three o'clock when things were winding down, asking the vendors, you know, how did they do? Thank you for coming and making sure it was cleaned up. And Greg did that last year and there was nothing left other than, you know, what was in the trash can. So. But I mean, it's, it's not a big moneymaker for us. We do it for the community. And right now with this, we kind of feel that we got a little bit of a slap side of the head trying to help out the community. If it is, if what it is.
It certainly wasn't intended that way. And we probably should have done it a little bit better. Communications, but that's something we're working on. I will say that. What's the rest of the board feel like?
I mean, we... I think there needs to be better communication. I think both ways as well. I've been on the board for a year and a half now. This is the first time that I'm seeing either of you. And I know that it is mutual and I don't quite know where to find you.
Well, probably we would be here, but Fairhaven is not even a member of the Chamber. They chose not to renew the membership a few years ago. So, I mean, that's kind of why we haven't really probably been here because, you know, there again, you talk about a two-way communication. We even changed our meeting night years ago from Tuesday to Wednesday night. It didn't coincide with your meeting because there was talk of, you know, Helen Andrew coming to our meeting.
So correct me if I'm wrong. I'm sure your Facebook page, I'm pretty sure your Facebook page says your address is 12 Park Place, Fairhaven, and it says that you represent Fairhaven, Castleton, Benson in...
West Haven.
West Haven. So if Fairhaven hasn't renewed their membership, so why would Fairhaven still be listed on your page?
Because that's the way the Chambers are mapped in the state and basically you're in our area.
Right. Oh, and that's fine. And I'm, and I'm new. This is my second meeting, so I don't, I'm learning as I go too. So I don't know. Same, as Chad said, I had no idea up until this, weren't even finding, there's no contact information of who's in charge. So I wanted to reach out and just kind of talk, but, you know, I couldn't.
The towns generally, you know, are members of the Chamber. And they even used to be the, you know, submit a membership. And we're the, probably the least expensive Chamber in the entire state. Most Chambers are dues are, you know, three hundred, fifteen hundred dollars and we're only sixty-five dollars a year. It's more of just a, you know, to help with the administrative costs of the Chamber. Our goal is not to make a lot of money.
So it, I think the larger question is how can we foster a better relationship between the Chamber and the town? Right? But as far as the, as far as the Spring Fling fee, I think part of that is the response to community requests, right? I know the Revenue Committee talked a lot about charging vendors because a lot of folks understand that craft fairs around have some sort of charge that, you know, we've seen upwards of fifty dollars for a booth. I know that it's a conversation about a hundred and fifty dollars total roughly. So I, I don't think this is something that we just kind of threw out there, you know, in spite of you all. It was really just the town is asking us to find different ways to generate revenue. This was one suggestion that we kind of followed through with.
So I guess the question I still have is the car show. What are we, what is your plans to assess the car show?
Well, it would, it would be, we would charge the same way you guys charge, I guess. I, you know, really hadn't really thought it through at all, thought about it that much, you know.
It should be the vendor charge and then we have, we have the Legion and we usually have Ann Peltier there and sometimes Louis comes up to their sugar house. So basically we have three vendors there. The cars, you know, the cars are not considered vendors. I mean, if they pay us to come there, that hopefully they'll walk out of there with a little slate plating, you know, plaque, you know, but...
Once again, what's the, what's the board feel like? I mean, it doesn't seem like...
I never even, for my part, never even thought of, I know you do the car show, but I, my mind was more around inside the fence, the vendors that are selling food. And it's not just, we've been talking a lot about Spring Fling, but we have the lumberjack. We, we have Apple Fest. We, there's, I think even there's, we even do, I don't know if they had vendors from the, Devil's Bowl had the stock cars that were out on the east side of the park, I think, one, one year. We were, we, that's where my mind was. So I'm, when I'm thinking...
Touch a truck last year too.
We do, because we do things that you mentioned earlier that we hadn't talked, concerts in the park, for example. Let's talk about the elephant that's in the room here because we do, touch a truck is the itty-bitty committee. These are the, and concerts in the park are town-sponsored events as well. And both of those, we subsidize those, those groups. So when we, I wasn't looking to go to concerts in the park and, and wasn't thinking taking money from those. I wasn't, it just wasn't one of those that we, that we were looking at. I know they do, they do things with the monies they make as far as scholarships and different things like that.
My thought, my thought is either we do it or we don't. And, I mean, I don't want to do it for one. I don't want a piecemeal like the, the car show is ridiculous to, to think that, you know, we would not charge the cars because that's the draw. So if we're not, we're either going to do this or we're not. And that's, that's my question to the board.
Now, another question is, is, so in the case of the car show, you're talking about charging the vendors.
Well, that's, that's how it was. I think that if we look back at the minutes, that's what I would say.
That's how the revenue, I think there, when the Revenue Committee came up and they, we put a group of people together.
With the car show, we don't even charge the, the food vendors that come in to provide for the car show. We don't even charge them. And the, we only have usually at most five vendors. So, you know, twenty-two bucks.
Yeah, I know.
You know, I mean, in the Air Force, we had a expression, it was stomping on piss hands. And I think the idea of...
Well, take that, hold, hold on, hold on. I'm, I'm actually kind of on your side a little bit. I don't like... But don't insult us by saying we're, we're, we're trying to find revenue for the town. We're trying to make our taxes less than they are. And that's the whole purpose of it. It wasn't to slap anybody in the face. It wasn't any of that kind of thing. And so I, to me, it isn't worth the trouble, frankly. My personal thing. But I voted, I voted for it. So I'm not saying I, you know, I don't want to sound like ethical, but, but I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to, you know, make this the hill I die on either, you know. So, but I don't want to be, I don't want you to think that it's, you know, that we're not trying for the town.
We didn't get away with that.
I just got one thing though. You know, we're trying, trying to figure out a way to make a little more money for the town. Now, we painted the fences where thanks to two volunteers, they saved the town some money. But the fence is over eight thousand dollars to get a bit, bit painted. And then now we got the lights in the park going and they're not going to be there for free. There's going to be maintenance and stuff on them. So somehow, some way, we've got to find some revenue for this kind of thing if we want this town to grow. And as far as vendors, just for a perfect example, I done some homework this week. Wayhoney Ork had a Bigfoot convention last fall. They charge fifty dollars a piece for a ten-by-ten booth. So that's just an example of what's going on around us. I'm, I'm open for ideas, trust me. But that's where I'm at.
Yeah. I, I certainly don't mean to impugn any, whatever, but I think the, there's a, I remember back, you know, several years ago, you know, five years ago or so, there was some thought that the Chamber was making a lot of money on these events. And as I think we, you know, said it, they wanted a piece of the, the action for the town. And we basically said, well, you know, we don't represent just here. So if we, you know, kick back any money to the town, then we're also, you know, we need to do that with all the towns and...
Except that it's our part.
Yeah. So there's a, a mis, not an effort, a misperception that the Chamber makes a lot of money on these events and we don't. We actually lost money some years.
I don't want, I don't want this to denigrate any further than it has, but, you know, we want things happening in the park. We love that.
I envy you guys in the least trying to figure out ways to make, to bring some money into the town. I think it's a reasonable, it was a reasonable thought. But right now, it seems to me it's becoming a public relations nightmare.
Pretty much everything we do is.
Well, it's, it's looking like, and I'm going to step back. I know you guys don't want to go on Facebook, but I'm going to step back and I know you've seen the comments being made on, on the one page that, you know, we're, the town is money grubbing and they're going after the nonprofits, the school. Why are we going, why, you know, why are, I, my suggestion at this point would be if you could, if maybe the town could step back this year and set up meetings with the Chamber and come up with a mutual, mutually agreeable solution for next year. That's my suggestion.
Do you want to say something, Joe?
Yeah, just to put this into perspective, I think Greg was, I think it was he who said, you're talking about a hundred and fifty bucks. It's not a lot of money, right? It's, it's short money. But what does that hundred and fifty dollars pay for, right? So we have an organization in town that's using a town park that needs maintenance. That stuff doesn't get done for free, no. And what I'm going to talk about is not just maintenance. I'm going to talk about the two guys and their truck that show up for Spring Fling, lay out the barrels, make sure everything's okay. After Spring Fling, they go around and pick up the garbage that's there free, that's, you know, the big bags sitting by the garbage cans. And then they run it down to the dump and dump it for free. Right? So that's not, that, that's all on the taxpayer's back. Every two-dollar bag or three-dollar bag of garbage, every gallon of gas that gets used, every hour that those guys are out there. And it's not a lot. It's like a hundred bucks for those guys. So it's not a lot of money, no. But it's money that's on the taxpayer's back so that way the Chamber can have an event. And it's not that much money. The town does it. They're not making a profit. Beyond that though, what about the water that's used in the park? Nobody's charging for water. Every year I get a call, why isn't the electricity working down here? This electricity needs to be working. Nobody gets charged for electricity either. The services that the town is providing the Chamber actually exceed that hundred and fifty dollars. It's just for years you've been used to getting free water, used to getting free transfer station privileges, used to getting free electricity.
Never used water, so it's okay.
Whichever vendors do, maybe not you personally.
No, no, none of the vendors do during Spring Fling. We had a couple that would use to come. The little trench bike guy there, he used to use it, but don't believe he used water in the last five years.
So either way, the point being, the town is providing a service that, that exceeds what we're asking. Right? So this, this is just taking care of your garbage and taking care of staff. And I did because of this letter that came out with the, with the bright red, the bright red letters. That was good. I did get a few calls and when I did talk to your vendors, they said, that's reasonable. Because I told them it's picking up your garbage. It's taking it to the dump. It's setting out barrels. So when the vendors actually learn where that money is going, they say, oh, all right. That's been my experience with this is that once they understand, it's not this big to do. They just, they don't expect to get free services.
It really sounds to me though that you're not welcoming, I hate to say this, but you're not welcoming people from all over this county and state to the park and Fairhaven.
It really sounds to me, though, that you're not welcoming, I hate to say this, but you're not welcoming people from all over this county and state to the park and very-
That's, that's a little exaggerated, I think, Roy, it, it's not that at all, it's, we welcome anybody in the park, but it costs money to do that. But I don't want, we're, we're starting to repeat ourselves, so let's, what's the board's feelings?
So, I think, like Jose said, I think this year we take a step back, and then we have meetings with all these people that do events in the park, and we come up with some kind of mutually agreed term to cover some of these costs.
Done a motion? I, wait a minute, I, I wanna tackle a little more, because I don't really agree with that, I, what I, I believe there's some middle ground, but I don't, I believe the middle ground is that Joe just said he talked to some, and some of the vendors said they, they, it seemed reasonable. All we're, all I would say is, let's go halfway on this, and the last thing I'd want is someone who's trying to sell their jams and jellies, and aren't even breaking even on that deal, but I think it's this year we go and let the vendors know that we would, we would like, if they can afford it, we would like the five dollars, and explain what it's for. For the helping to, to ha, to take care of the area where we're all, and, and we, we are extremely welcoming, and I, I disagree with, with what you said about sending, sending the wrong message, everything we've done for the last few years is making Fair Haven more and more, or welcoming to everybody. So, I'm just saying that what I, what I would propose is we go out, and we, when, when you're signing people up and everything, we just, we need your help to say, if, if you would like, the town is asking for a five-dollar, call it a donation, I don't, I don't care what, what you call it. Don't have to give it or, or anything here, but let's, it's, anything sounds like it's moving in, in a direction to see, now, the last thing I want, 'cause last year's, the last two spring flings, I think the vendors have been half the vendors that I used to, used to see there. The last thing I wanna do is drive more vendors away, uh, 'cause, and that's, I don't think anyone around this table is looking to drive more vendors away. Uh, we, we wanna make it work, but I, I think without throwing, throwing the whole, whole thing out, uh, they are ma, making that a, uh, one where they, they understand, here's where it's going, if they don't, if they don't wanna put the additional five dollars, doesn't hurt, you're, 'cause I understand how tough it is from the chamber, I, I would imagine, uh, and, and how, we don't, we don't have a whole lot of businesses, including the town of Fair Haven, as a member of the chamber, uh, right now, and that's, I, that's another whole discussion, another time, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with doing it, 'cause as I say, I've been there in the park at five o'clock in the morning, a lot of them get here, you know, quarter to six in the morning, ready for that, explain to them, the only thing I just wanna do is clarify what we're doing with the car show. Yeah, I, that's a problem for me, too, I, uh, first of all, if I was a, I don't care if I'm selling pot holders, but if somebody offers me the chance to not spend five dollars, I won't, you know? It's this, it's, it's business, I mean, I'm gonna save my, but I, it, we either gotta make a rule or we don't, or we, we do what, what the, the six selectmen suggested, and, and the newest selectman almost made a motion to, uh, that makes, I don't, that's my, my feeling is, is we pull back and, and, and think it out a little bit.
So, and that's, that's my thinking, too, we don't have an organized system to say, hey, these events will cost this much, or this type of event will cost that much, I think we need to take a step back, make some sort of policy around what we're charging and what type of events, and then come back to it.
Is that a motion?
I will make that motion.
You wanna second?
I will second, I will second that motion.
Now you should, Doc. No, no, I, so, your motion is not, to do, to do nothing this year and look into it, 'cause we're not really, what I, what I hear you saying is you're making a motion that we're gonna look into, we're not giving up on the fact that it may be an additional five dollars in another year.
In another year.
I, I'd like to see this board take some action for July one, new fiscal year starting.
And that would answer the question that, that you're asking, the car show, nothing changes, to answer the question you've been trying to get answered.
Oh, cancel the, we've been doing, then you add. That would be good.
Well, so, we'll see how it goes, if we all of a sudden lose-
We'll, we will keep you involved in, you know, make sure that you get in the discussion, we'll, I think we need to write a policy thing, so everybody can look at it and say, this is crazy, or it's alright.
Clarification, you said July first?
Well, I, I don't, have you ever seen us move that fast?
The car show was at the end of July.
Right, it's the last, it's the last.
No, nothing's gonna hap, nothing's gonna happen in, in the fiscal year, starting, and even though the fiscal year starts July one, spring fling is Memorial Day a little bit before it, nothing's gonna happen before July one of next year, I believe, is what you-
I, I think that's what we're looking for.
That's not, I guess, that's not what I had meant, but it does make sense to say not this park season.
Not this season.
Not this park season.
Do you have an idea what your?
'Cause I can, 'cause I can support that.
So, I, I-
You know, when I get home and start typing it up, it would be precise.
It'll crystallize, it'll crystallize for me in a minute.
I think he was going to clarify. The motion is to, uh, hold off on any vendor fees related to the park for this 2024. I'll second that.
You already did.
Well, I'll do it again. Does, does that mean that the five dollars for this spring fling is still in place?
No.
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 No, nothing, nothing, nothing has changed.
Is, we're talking, so we're talking, we're talking two fiscal years, it's the twenty-four and twenty-five, so-
So we're not charging us this year?
Not charging it this year, we, we want time to talk and figure out all the detail, answer the questions that, that we don't have answers for you right now today, that's the main thing.
Well, that's very kind of you, um, well, the, the, the things already went out, and we've already got people that have sent in their, their extra five dollars and everything, so we can-
When you hand it back to them, they'll be, they'll be ready for it.
I can beat them in the morning to hand out five dollars bills.
There you go. Explain to them that we have to do something, I mean, the last I knew, this is not free Haven, it's Fair Haven. So you gotta understand, something's gotta happen, folks, we're not sustainable the way we're going.
In the, in the past, uh, one of the, um, trash vendors actually donated their services, and we took care of the trash in the past.
Anything to help, but, like, like Joe says.
Cost money.
We're not making money, we're trying to compensate just a little bit. I mean, I think everybody has to understand that.
Yep. We got, we got a motion on the board?
Yeah, motion and second.
Yep. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
See you, Harris.
Okay, so-
Thank you for coming in.
Hey, uh, just a quick question, what is the issue regarding the parking on West Park Place? Since I kinda have a vested interest, I just wondered what the issue is, it's not-
We're trying to add, we're trying to figure out-
When we paved that, add some more parking, diagonal parking.
Diagonal, as opposed, as opposed to, as opposed to, um, thorough-
Down towards the Baptist Church, around that, on near side of the road, just get a little-
On the park side of, on the park side of the road, when they pave it, move that curb back a little bit, so that you can maybe get with ten, eight to ten?
We're, we're thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty, it's, it's really trying to get more parking, as people keep using the park more and more, we, we, uh, I think we need to look at parking more around the park, as well as just the parking lot.
It'll also help with the car shows and things like that.
Yeah, it should.
But, you know, it's just, the curbs have to be reset anyway, so-
Oh, the curbs on the west side are, are about-
Those, those curbs on the west side?
They're all underneath the ground.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I remember when they did the, uh, there was a, a backup in the sewer system right in front of Monique's old house, um, on, uh, on the north side of our property, um, and they, they had to go down, up that far to find the manhole that's been covered over by, by that. Okay, you go ahead, thank you.
We stopped there. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Thanks.
Wait a minute, wait, Chen, uh, about that motion.
I thought it was clear.
You said something about during this park season.
So, the calendar year 2024.
To get through all the-
Oh, calendar, okay.
Yep.
That makes it the easiest way to do it. Everybody, everybody good with that? You voted on?
Yep, we are.
Okay.
I'd like to change that.
Yeah, wait a minute, I didn't, not in a second.
Now that they got, let's do it.
We are not off to a resounding start here, folks. Amendments to the agenda.
I oppose two.
Yep.
One, can we invite Moose back to-
Yes, let's bring Moose under new business.
Yep.
Right now.
Right now, let's do it right now.
He seems hyper, and then, um-
That's our new mayor?
Yeah, it's our new mayor, and then can we add an F under new business for Scotch Hill Road Repair?
F?
Can, about Scotch Hill repair, what?
Road repair.
Can I have a motion for that?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, Moose is coming in.
Moose was pretty excited the first time there.
I asked him on that energy, but he-
I thought he was coming in, I didn't, didn't know if I had a doggy treat in my pocket or not, but he was coming in. He might, he might have taken Moose and gone home, I hope not.
Tell him he can come next week.
Yeah, there's always next week.
I think Moose was real excited, though.
Wouldn't you be if you were your elected mayor?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Idea what that entailed.
Tonight.
Alright, well, when, waiting for Moose to show, we'll do approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March nineteenth, that's written.
I'll second that.
And, you had a-
I have a correction.
Here he comes. Suspend that for a second.
Here's, here's the mayor.
Come down, buddy, come down. Say aye, can you say aye?
Well, we did.
Oh, he's a puppy.
Yes.
Say aye, everybody, come here, oh, careful, careful Moose.
Well, we didn't, we didn't get a plaque, we haven't got a plaque yet for him, but we wanted to welcome Moose and congratulate him as being the new mayor, hey Moose, how you doing? How you doing, Moose? Yeah, everybody okay?
Yeah, I'm just excited.
Yeah.
He's gonna go see Rich.
Gotta see everybody.
Moose is a puppy.
Yeah.
Hey.
Hello, baby.
Thanks for coming, Moose.
We will get something official out for Moose, so he can be, so he can have a, maybe a medallion of some sort, you know, that he-
Write a badge or something.
Can I get your picture with, with your, with the mayor?
Absolutely.
Okay, buddy, I'm gonna come visit you.
He's got a little beautiful face.
Careful, you're getting my picture with the mayor.
Joe, I don't know if I can do, I, I'm not gonna do this.
You zip, Moose, zip.
You're gonna jump on me, aren't you?
Yes.
He's definitely gonna jump.
Bring my German Shepherd, eh?
Hey Moose, you're talking to a cat guy.
He says I wanna, I just wanna kiss her.
He loves the face, yeah.
Hi, baby.
Okay, everybody, your turn.
Catch your nose.
I was just saying, thank you.
Moose is, Moose, you're officially the mayor, we'll proclaim it somehow, sometime.
And he's doing his official duties and shit.
You don't wanna kiss?
They got a lot of troops.
Moose, can you look at me?
Moose. Hey, zip, zip.
Moose, the dad.
Yeah, I mean, you try to handle it for me, if I go through your way.
Hi.
Luke, what's your last name?
Hepburn.
Hepburn. So Luke lives in Fair Haven, and having his company actually put in his break-
Put this sprinkler system, nice shop.
Thank you.
Well, we look forward to Moose.
Luke, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night, guys.
Have a good night, everybody.
Bye.
Say bye, Moosey.
Yeah, Moose, Moose says, and you guys better stay in line here, 'cause you-
He walks me, I don't walk him, that's for sure.
Thank you for putting up with me, guys.
I'm impressed, you're a cat guy.
Oh, I was, I grew up with dogs, I love dogs, but-
So you were explaining, you were explaining something in the minutes.
We had suspended our motion here, we were back to talking about the amendment, the, uh-
Correction on page two, last paragraph, second to last line, it says, Mr. Galvin noted, if there's a viable plan in place, OSHA would waive the seventy thousand dollar compliance fine, there is no OSHA fine, that was a hypothetical, um, that was a hypothetical conversation. If something were to have happened with that ladder and OSHA, if we could, if we could note it as a-
OSHA, if there was a viable, uh-
Yeah, which, there is, there is no fine.
Right, OSHA would waive the, uh, noted that if there was a viable plan in place, uh, any, any fines would be, could be waived, could be waived, right?
But it's, the whole idea is that it's a hypothetical, there is no fine.
Right.
There is no, anything, there's no OSHA violation, and by the end of the day, we'll have a good ladder anyways.
Just delete the one?
I would, I would note it as a hypothetical fine.
Okay. Joe's going.
Um, yeah, I'll-
Joe's gonna email.
Well, we'll, we'll, wordsmith that a little bit, okay.
You didn't say it just like that. He said, he said it like that.
Well, we were all talking about what ifs, that was the problem, you know, if, if somebody, if OSHA had come in, if OSHA had seen a ladder, if, 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 so, it, you know, it would be a fine, but it's, we never, we, we haven't been fined, and we are not, we're rectifying the situation, so we don't have to worry about them.
There's something else.
Um, everybody okay with the change?
I am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Five minutes for public comment. Mary?
Uh, Mary McNeil, um, I'm on the cemetery committee, and I was just wondering what you guys planned for the cemetery trees.
Uh, I don't know, usually we get suggestions from you guys, I, I don't know what our budget, what the-
Cemetery trees?
Yeah, I sent you a thing on the trees, I sent you a letter, I gave it to you in fact.
Okay, I must have it, what was the suggestion, to cut them down?
Yeah, there, there is a lot of bad trees in the cemetery, if you don't cut them down, they're gonna come down, one or the other, so-
Which cemetery?
Both, both cemeteries.
Okay.
So I'd like you guys to do something about it, rather than go to the taxpayer and vote on it, or whatever, I would rather work with you.
Well, 'cause if you go to the taxpayer, or if you go to the vote, they'll vote for it.
Well, yeah, that's, I know, but-
But, yeah, yeah.
It's nicer if it's from you guys.
Once we get everybody reappointed and everything, maybe what the deal was, we'll schedule a, a meeting to come in, and you can talk about which is where. We can get, dig that letter up and, um, find out what that says, and give us a copy, and, if you could.
Of course. Um, so, there are staff that, that they take care of the trees, and if they see one is, was not good, they'll take it down, or one if it's gonna fall, not gonna take it down, they'll take it down. I don't think they'll take down trees that are just not endangerable.
Yeah.
So if there is something, and, you know-
Well, we have a budget, there's a certain amount of money we put in for tree removal over the year, right, for the, for the cemetery?
Yeah, there's, there's trees, yeah, there's tree removal. Yeah, there's, there's trees, yeah, there's tree removal.
Okay.
So we.
So there'll be something set up. So that's, that's what we'll do and, and not to put you off, but it's.
No, I just didn't.
I don't wanna talk when I don't know what I'm talking about. Okay.
Don't wanna be put off.
I don't blame you. I know the feeling. Um, yeah, so we'll, we'll get this, we're reappointing committees tonight. And we'll, we'll schedule a meeting very, very soon. It's, it's cleanup time anyway, so. Good time to get what, what's necessary. I can't promise that we have enough money to cut every tree down.
No, I know, not everything coming, but.
We can do a survey of the worst ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure something. Yeah.
But just keep doing nothing, it's not.
Yep. Agreed.
Hey Chris, quick question. Is that what the inspector of Lumber is for?
No. No. No.
I haven't figured this one out yet.
They're old fashioned things. Right, that goes back. They're more, they're more fun than they, and still somebody doesn't get robbed that can't read and write and measure. Serious, that's what it was for.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, like, public comments?
Yeah.
So I'm a volunteer with the Cassington Sailing Camp where, that's offered by Cassington Recreation. And last week, registration opened, so I just wanted, for the record, I'm Joshua Ferguson. I just wanted for the record to say that registration is open for the sailing camp on Bomasie. Offered by the Cassington Rec Department. And, uh, it's for fifth through eighth graders.
Sixth through eight?
Fifth.
Fifth. That sounds like fun, actually. Is, is there a fee for that or a cost and?
The tuition is $100. It's an instructive course and it's $100.
It's a hundred dollar tuition?
Per student. And we will cover, I'm gonna offer to cover up to five students. So we will cover for some students who may not be able to afford it.
Good. Cool. Good.
What are the dates on the camp?
It's weather permitting, but mid-July, the second and third week of July.
Excellent.
But it could be obvious, you know, weather permitting.
Thanks.
And what kind of a camp is it?
It's a.
Recreation camp?
It's like an introduction to sailing.
Cool. Yeah. Uh, anyone else? Roseanne. I'll be darned.
Joe and I talked about this yesterday and he suggested I mention it to you today. I got to thinking, don't, don't run away too fast.
Thought I spelled slow.
And they're doing all the digging up this year over in the free parking. And you guys know, I've been a big proponent of putting lights in. And I understand we're not going to at this point. But I was wondering if there was a possibility we could at least, while it's all dug up, maybe, and I don't know the logistics of it, Rich would know much better than I, but a trench where you could put like, um.
Conduit.
Conduit, you know, like the pipe, plastic pipe, so that in the future, if you were to decide to put lights in through the median, um, it's already there, you won't have to dig up everything you just did five, 10 years ago. And.
We're not putting lights up?
Not in the middle.
What? There was, there was always gonna be lights there and they weren't going to be the, the park lights. They were gonna be goos next or something like that.
They got pulled out.
They, they got, when the funding went south, they got pulled out and the, and the only lighting is the outside. Like, we talk, talk some about, uh, uh, maybe trying to boost up the amperage, but then you got into the issue. Yeah, you might, if, if your bedroom window is right next to one of those lights, you don't want that either. Quite that bottle. But I understand what, I understand what you're asking for.
If we were to do it while it's already dug up, I think it will save money. Plus, you're also talking about 2024 money as opposed to 2029 or 2034 money.
I just.
And I, I'm just throwing it out there that it, it may save money in the future. And I don't think it would be a huge deal since it's, again, already dug up, to throw a piece of.
Shouldn't be.
Plastic pipe in there. Um, so that if you do decide in the future, all you gotta do is slide the wires through. Instead of creating another huge mess.
I just, my, my only concern on that is every time on this project that we say, hey, wait a minute, it's usually add multiple months to the project and getting, because of, because of the way, where the money's coming from, it isn't like us just going, hey, it's all dug up, just put it down there. I don't know if we have to go back and get sign off on drawings and, uh, uh, what, what that would entail. I just would want, not want us to try to save a few, few thousand and cost us thousands of dollars more on something we may or may not put a light in it at a. I, I don't want anything to slow that project. That's been three years overdue.
I'm not looking to stop it.
That's my only, that's my only, that's my only concern. If we were to add lights, if we were to, if we were to add lights, we'd, we'd run them in the middle, right? Where the water garden is.
Yeah, where the rain garden is.
Rain garden. So that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be as invasive, that's for sure, but. I'd like to find out, I'd like to see if.
What if, what if we done some solar lights down in the center? You're gonna have lights on the outside as it is right now.
Right. And you don't need.
What if, what if in the future, we plant some solar lights? Could you do that?
I, I just do not want to let the contractors that have already got their equipment down there say, stop the presses. We got Fairhaven who can't make up their mind what they want to do. We're not gonna do that. We can't do that, folks. That would be. But. I hear, I hear the lights, because we, we beat that lights right to death over the last couple of years.
Meet them in the center.
That's a good idea, those solar lights. Cause that would alleviate.
May not need them. These newer lights, LEDs are pretty bright anyway. They may be all sad, may not be.
Well, let's, let's investigate it, but let's not, let's not slow anything down. I think that. That's, 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 I've watched, I've watched it pump the brakes and it puts you into a tailspin. Yeah. Yeah.
It's amazing, just a simple little thing that if we were doing it on my property or yours, would just be like, oh yeah, it was, you know. And to do it.
Lot of people, lot of people, lot of bureaucrats in the, in the mix, that's the problem. As you well know. All right. Anybody else for? Okay, department head report. Looks like you're it, Tim.
Looks like it's it to me today. Okay. Uh, we'll start with some recognition, Sergeant, Sergeant Kerber and Officer McDermott received from the state. Uh, the 20, it was for 2023, the law, law enforcement recognition certificate. Um, and it's for their efforts to, to slow people down and to catch our, our drunk drivers out on the highway. So they were, they were recognized by the state and we appreciate their efforts.
Sounds like they got a couple, sounds like they got a couple this week.
Yes, yes, they have.
Busy week, I have it.
Yeah.
Um, just from the police department, a couple of quick updates. We had six arrests over the last couple of weeks. Um, 68 traffic or municipal violations, 19 written warnings. We handed out two parking violations and there were five car crashes. Um, since the last meeting, we've done six sets of civilian fingerprints. Hello, from DPW. So our, our DPW foreman Nate Saxton had a baby. It's a little boy named Noah. We're congratulating him.
Congratulations.
Uh, I, I talked.
Nate had it?
Yeah, this is, I think this is third boy.
Did they get a one?
Was it, was it Nate or is it what, is what? Hey, did we give him a Fairhaven maiden?
It was, it was. Right over my head. Never mind.
You gotta explain jokes that aren't worth it. Are you sure?
Well, I'm dumb, so I don't get it anyway. Uh, so he gave me a quick update. They did finally get the Christmas tree out of the fountain. Um, he apologized. He apologized, he said, I thought we got it already, so we appreciate that. Um, we got a little bit of storm drain, storm drain repaired done today. Uh, they started on West Street. They're out there tinkering with that. It's gonna take a little bit more work, but they're, they're on it. Uh, they fixed a curb stop yesterday, so that was all in like the last day and a half when they got that done. Curb stop on, I think it was Second?
Second Street.
Second Street, yeah. That only, so the, we did shut the water off on Second. The only real impact was to that house, though. Uh, there wasn't a boil water for that, uh, cause our valves help. Yeah. Um, working with, from my office, still working with Peter Schneider on the grant for Skyline. Um, he's, that's like 85, 90% complete. We're gonna have to have a public hearing April 30th to finish that process up and then, um, knock on wood, uh, they fund it. That's $60,000 for a study, if you recall.
I think there's two of them, aren't there?
There's, yes, there's also V Light. It's, the organization is V Light, which I don't know what that stands for. But they're also involved now, so we have to do an application for them. Uh, for the board, the water and sewer budget is, is under development. We're about a week ahead of schedule. You'll see that. Let me see when you'll see that. Sometime this month. Yep, so April 30th will be our first look at the water sewer budgets this year. Uh, paperwork's back for the real estate. We sold three properties. Um, the real estate, all that came back. It was with the real estate agent and with the lawyers, so we're moving forward on that.
Talk posted and, or will be.
I posted it early and it goes in the paper Friday.
Thank you.
Um, so if you remember, there was the TDI power line that was coming through, was it Bomasie?
Oh, sure.
Lake Champlain, yeah. Actually, I finally got ahold of the state. They said TDI is still permitted to run that line. They're just looking for somebody to buy the power, um, the other end. So once they find a, a buyer, uh, they can move forward. Uh, the Scotch Hill project, which I think we're, we're gonna talk about later, that's moving, that's moving along pretty quick. We got some bids, we got some parts. Um, we're gonna, Nate and I are gonna go out tomorrow to take some measurements. Uh, to see how far out, or rather how close we can build that road if we raise it up a little bit. Um, if we go into, cause if you've been out there, you know it's a swamp on each side. If we hit that swamp, then we're dealing with wetlands. So my goal is to not hit the swamp.
Talk to, um, what's his name is coming in at the end of the month?
Josh.
No.
Alan?
Alan.
Alan May?
Alan May. He's coming to look at that. So he has funds that can mitigate, cause that's exactly what his, his funding is, is for water sources next to road. So as soon as I said, well, there's a swamp overrunning the road, how's that count? He said, perfect. But he wanted to wait until the snow was gone and, you know, it was, there was no hint of, uh, frost and he just wanted to see it when it was dry, when it was, uh, open.
Yeah, give him a call.
So, cause, cause that's, uh, we may be able to do a much more involved project than that. You know, which would make sense to me, a big culvert or something like that. But anyways, go ahead.
Yeah, now I'll give him a call. Um, and there, uh, if you were following the drama through the park, somebody did lose control, caring through the park, wiped the fence, bounced out on the bank side and then, um, they caught the suspect.
I watched that video and I can't believe you didn't hit the fountain, like just watching the tracks.
Yeah.
That was impressive. You know, that there wasn't more damage than.
I was just holding my breath watching that.
Some, some people are good at drumming.
Is there where the posts was?
So, um, the historical society did reach out to the person that repairs those posts, repairs or replaces. Um, and they're gonna try to repair it first. If they can't make the repair, then we'll just, we'll have to put it in the wind.
There, I, I wanna suggest, there was a recent incident in Colting, Vermont, where an individual caused damage on the track at the senior center and the person who did it as part of their restitution contributed to the cause. So I didn't know if that was offered to this person or if that's even relevant to the state.
No, they'll pay for it. They're not, they're not getting it for free.
Good.
Uh, that's what I got.
Just to note for the record, uh, it's cheaper and saves more lives to get a designated driver.
Mm-hmm. Good plug.
Yes, it is.
Questions for Joe? Just Fourth Street, the, the cutout that, that we have, is, what's the plan for getting some hot mix over that?
Yep, we're gonna get some hot mix. The, when do the plants open, Rich? Do you know?
I was, they gotta be soon.
Getting real close, but the plants aren't.
Somewhere around 15th of April. But I'm only guessing.
Okay.
So we were waiting for.
I would say soon.
Okay.
Before you can even get it.
Yeah, we were waiting to get some hot mix and drop it into holes that are cold patching it, re-cold patching it and then putting patches up.
Mm-hmm. That's good.
Well, if you cold patch it, the right way would be to take it back out, but not patch it later.
Yeah.
Yeah, it isn't worth the wait.
We're, we're so close now to.
Okay. Is, is the one ton back online yet or one that? Re-sheep, re, got a little damage there in the last storm?
Uh, yeah, it's, I don't know about the wing, but I know the truck itself is up.
They had the wing back on the next day.
Was it? Oh, great.
Lasted not, the ball threads came off.
Um, one other thing, uh, we should thank Carrie LaFawn. That was a nice agile, um, response to the, to the, our part of what happened with the oil spill up at the high school.
I.
She, she nailed that.
I went down last Friday and she gave me a tour and working at a wastewater plant, I was very impressed with how she runs ours. It's very clean, she's very knowledgeable.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, she's a great asset for this town.
She had a, according to Joe, and I'm taking this 30, but I'm, I'm taking, she had a plan and in works, contacted the state and had an idea of what to do, told the state, the state was happy with her thoughts and, and, uh, she, she just, she, she stepped up. That's, that should be noted.
Yeah.
That was a good one. Anyways. Moving right along. Uh, water tank ladder purchase, speaking of which.
Yeah, so no mic tonight. Um, I only have one, one bid. So far, we need, we need at least two.
Then let's not speak of it, but we're, it's in the works, we're good to go. Okay. We'll just say that's tabled. Highway financial plan.
This is, yeah, this is our report to the state. Every year we have to tell them, you know, what we're spending and how we're spending it. So this is your budgeted money, not, not grant funds. So I, I need a, a motion and then the board to sign that document, please.
And it's a motion to spend the money that I see here?
Is the report? Yes.
So I make motion that we sign the annual financial plan for, and it's for $646,370.
$646,000?
$370.
Thank you.
There a second?
Awesome.
Now, let me ask you what all that entails, cause that's way over. Is that the entire?
That's like, that's paving and road maintenance and plowing and.
Okay, okay.
It's.
All right. So it's essentially the, the.
Highway budget.
The highway budget, okay. Okay. Is there, we did have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Parking on West Park, please.
Yeah, so, uh, Rich and I, and Rich, you can, you know more about it than I do, but, uh, Mr. Green and I went down, Mr. Green and I went down, uh, and took a look at, uh, the greens, a little bit of green space on West Park, and kind of spitballed, um, what, if anything, we wanted to do with parking.
Okay, we measured out today. Um, we always gonna be checking in on the regs as far as distances, but, um, we actually took a measurement out from here where the diagonal parking exists already along the main highway. It's thirty, well, thirty-four feet, thirty-five feet from center line to curb. And so, we took that same thirty-five feet measurement and went over approximately where the center line is on West Park Place, and, and, and measured our way in, and, uh, uh, there's a mark there in the ground where we put it. That, uh, curb has gotta be taken out and reset anyway for the paving. So, when you go down there and look up at it, you think, "It's so wide there anyway. Why not kick that curb back a little more and put diagonal parking?" And it'll create about twenty spaces or so, maybe even a little more. Um, so, that's where we're at. And we marked it out. There's plenty of room. Uh, we're gonna be losing about six feet of grass, maybe.
Outside of the fence, anyway.
It's, uh, it's totally outside the fence. We're not even near the fence.
Yeah.
It's up on this end. Uh, seeing it's gotta be reset anyway, why not reset it and take advantage of the whole, a little extra blacktop for that one area, but it's well worth it, in my opinion.
Well, we're gonna do that. Park, the parking right, are we, are we planning on paving West Park Place anyways?
Yeah, West, West Park.
Are we, are we grinding that?
Yes.
Good. So, that'll take care of...
Yes.
The, the curb problem on the other side as well.
Well, the curb problem on the other side's gotta go away, 'cause that curb is...
Well, it's, there it is.
It's, yeah. It's just chunks and pieces of concrete in there.
And you're losing six feet of grass on the east side?
No, on the east side. Oh, not east side.
This on the west, on the west side of the park?
On the west side of the park, but the east side of the road.
Correct, correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and the diagonal parking is, is you're going Adam Street towards Washington, so the diagonal will be this way, you'll be backing up and going out?
Correct.
Towards the town hall here?
Correct.
Is that how you want the traffic?
Yeah.
Makes a difference of where your diagonal is.
Yeah, well, then that makes sense, because you got the one way in the parking lot that comes out that way. You wouldn't want it to go the other way. Yeah, yeah. I don't see any...
Oh, that sounds...
So, at this point, we don't, we don't really have anything except consensus of the board to go to research that more and see what, what we're looking at, right? Because we don't know what we're voting on for, for cost or anything.
What, what is it gonna add? Do we have, my, my only question when you get all done is, do we have enough money to do it?
Well, if we're gonna pave, if we're gonna pave that, then the answer is yes. Well, you know, it's just a little more...
Resetting.
A little more...
So, the additional feet of payment you're adding to that, then?
Well, six feet.
Right, so six feet in the grand scheme of...
Right.
That whole row was...
No, no, I...
You know, pennies in the bucket. If you're already there and you're doing the work...
Right, why not?
Yeah, why not?
It's, we have the money. What I'm looking for, and I know, I don't wanna put you on the spot, is we have the money in our paving budget to do these parking spaces. That's more my question.
Well, we were doing, so, like Mike said, uh, we're there anyway, and it's short money. It's just, I guess the answer is yes. There's money there.
If we have, if we have the money, and then it's, we don't, I don't know if we need a vote for it, it's more just consensus, the board is, is foot parking?
Roseanne.
So, with the renovations that have been made here, one of the complaints I've heard around town about, you know, well, if they have any events up there, there's no parking. This would be wonderful.
Yeah. I mean, I couldn't even, oh, I almost had to park somewhere else the last meet. I was like, it was like, well, then I was like, uh, mostly somebody was pulling out, as I was pulling in, I was like, "I don't know where to park."
Putting in an extra twenty spaces not too far from here, I think, would be wonderful for us to have any kind of events upstairs.
Okay, okay, shoot.
Did you get what you were looking for?
Uh, yeah. Perfect.
Consensus, the board was, "Go ahead with the parking."
Yeah. We'll, uh, we'll mark it out, so that way, as you guys drive through town, you can pop over and just see kind of what, what that looks like, so that way, it's not a surprise if they start digging.
Yeah, sure.
When they start digging.
Uh, the VCDP, is there more to talk about that, or...
Yeah, this, so this is the board resolution.
Oh, okay.
I need, I need the board to sign this, so I can give it to, um, Community Development. Uh, this is, this is the board saying, "Yeah, we want the money, and we're gonna follow the rules."
So, you need a motion for that?
And, and it makes myself the, um, oh my God, what's it called? The, like, the contact person. There's a name for it. I forget what it's called.
Okay, uh, so you wanna, I'll make a motion that the board signs the resolution for the VCDP grant application and authorize Joe to be, uh, to administer it, maybe?
The authorized representative of the...
Authorized representative for?
They're gonna administer it anyway. They're gonna do all the...
Yeah, like...
This is that pass-through grant.
Yeah, this is passing through right to, this is for Skyline.
I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Everybody know what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass-throughs, generally, the town is the entity that they award the money to, but they give it, we give it to someone else to, uh, administer and to, um, actually do the legwork. That, we were the, we were the grantee for, for instance, for Rapple Tree when they got their money from the...
It's a pass-through grant?
It was a pass-through grant. Came to Fairhaven, they did, they took it and did all the work, and they're the ones that are responsible for it. Thank you. Liquor licenses?
Okay, you want some motions?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve a first-class club license and a third-class club license for the American Legion Fairhaven Post Forty-Nine.
I'll tell you what. Just, I'll just put, I'll just leave mine there.
Yeah, we, we, we have another two.
You hear the motion?
I did something wrong, too. Oh, I did something wrong.
Yeah, you...
Look at that. I messed everything up on the subject. Well, let's play this way. A man who remembers his life will never know the difference.
Okay, one, uh, did we, did I get a second for that, or I didn't?
I don't know if you did.
Make, I'll, I'll, let me do that over again. I'll make a motion to approve a first-class club license and a third-class club license for the American Legion Fairhaven Post Forty-Nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve a tobacco substitute endorsement for Brockton Corporation Shaws.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve an outside consumption permit and a first-class restaurant slash bar license for Scotch Hill Brewing Company.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And a first-class what? It's not on here.
Uh, right, it's the one they added after, a first-class, uh, restaurant slash bar license.
All of them?
That's all of them?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, uh, the next, next one on the list is Scotch Hill again?
I'm open.
You got it?
Yeah.
Yes, so, um, the state did give the town two hundred thousand in structures grants, so we could get Scotch Hill moving. Um, Nate, Nate went out, he talked to, um, Fabian's Earth Moving, and they provided us a quote to do the job. I'm asking the board to allow us to accept this quote, um, as a single source, single-source purchase, because this is a project that is, has been deemed an emergency, and we wanna move faster on it rather than not.
I make a motion, and we are...
Second?
I, I give the number. I just don't wanna do it unless we're, I'm, I'm in a weird position.
If you gave the number, you'd give an unfair advantage if we didn't go...
Yeah.
For further bids, so, I'll just, we're, we're good.
You're good?
I'll go with that.
I'll second his motion.
Discussion? This is unusual, but not, not unprecedented.
We're trying to move faster than that.
The people on Scotch Hill are probably saying it is...
It's not that fast, yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And, and just for the record, the bid was one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. So, it's less than what the grant was.
Okay, what exactly are they gonna do?
This is, um, four hundred feet, let's see, regrade approximately four hundred feet of Scotch Hill, remove existing asphalt, asphalt, uh, add tech geo grid, detect, uh, the fabric, installing two thirty-six inch covers by fifty feet, um, installing twenty-four inches of six-inch to twelve-inch stone, uh, more geotextile, fifteen crushed slate, fifteen inch, fifteen inches of three-inch crushed slate, uh, six inches of one and a half minus, slope in the shoulders, compacting the materials. And we'll have to get the paver out to do the, the paving, which we have a quote for him as well.
Uh, this project, would it be something where there's a road closure, or is it a one, one-site-at-a-time project?
There's gonna be a time, at some point, there's gonna be closure of it.
Okay. We're gonna do everything we can in the meantime, but, yeah, at some point, they're gonna have to shut the whole road down to get that, those culverts in.
But, but I bet they could probably have that covert in, passable, in a few hours. I mean, it's not, we're, we're not talking days and weeks.
No.
No.
I would say, I would say a day or two would be...
Right.
...a time.
We still need to go on that. I think we do, though.
No, we did. We are, we are.
Yeah, we did, that's right. Sorry. Anything else in schedule?
I'm just moving forward.
Yeah. There's, um, there's possibility of a little more issue. Yeah. Okay. Appointments?
Take a run again?
Get at it.
Uh, we'll, we'll do the cemetery committee first, and the, these are Mary McNeil, Danny Roberts, Matthew McNeil, Lorraine Brown, Scott Folesby, and Paul Aramey, all for, uh, one-year terms on the cemetery committee.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, the Economic Development Committee, uh, we're, I'll just read through the list again. It's, uh, Seal Hunt, Jessica Standard, Judy Sutherland, Chad Fejey, and myself, with Joe as an ex-officio member, for a one-year term. I'll make the motion that we appoint them.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Make a motion to appoint Jim Heller as our emergency management coordinator.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Make a motion to appoint Jim Heller as our emergency management coordinator.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Uh, make a motion to appoint Chris Stanton, Neil Robinson, for this is for the Energy Committee, uh, and, uh, Robert Richards. There are two vacancies on the Energy Committee at this time. For anyone who would like to be on the Energy Committee, they probably sense a...
We should advertise for that at some point. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint, for fence viewers, Bob Richards and Claire Stanley.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
We're at it again, Claire.
Yeah, we're back on the fence.
I'll take a walk one of these days.
Check out some fences.
I'll make a motion to appoint these fire department officers. Jim Heller, the chief, Tom Thuciel, the first assistant chief, Don Proctor, the second assistant chief, Wayne Carlton, captain, and Mike Finnegan, lieutenant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? You're getting there.
Make a motion to appoint for the forest fire warden, Mike Prevention. Oh, wait a minute, they have state that does them. I don't think we'll do that.
Yeah, state does that.
Now, take that motion back. Only the state can do that. Uh, we have a currently, let's see, also, we have a forest fire warden assistant vacant that the state appoints. Um, for the Otter Creek Communication District, we have a vacancy there. No one to appoint tonight.
Trish, is that...
Yeah, she can't make the meetings.
Um, and we have this inspector of lumber, and, uh, I haven't heard if, do, are we still doing inspector of lumber?
You don't need an inspector of lumber in...
State doesn't require, and I, I haven't seen Ray as an inspector. I'm just wondering if that one, we just...
What exactly is it?
An inspector of lumber? I don't, I don't know, so I hate to give you wrong answer, give you a wrong answer.
It's just my understanding that a hundred years ago, or, or even beyond that, he inspected lumber, that when people come off the boats and whatnot, so they didn't get short change.
Yeah, it's, what, back when people...
It was like a Waits and Meeger type thing that they have now, the gas pumps.
It's kinda like wayer of coal.
They used to have a wayer of coal also.
Yeah. People that couldn't read, or things like that, that...
So, so...
But if it was brought in by train, and the town would buy it, and you had to inspect it to make sure that you got what you were paying for.
Correct, correct.
I'll make a motion that we eliminate the position of inspector of lumber from our appointments.
How about wayer of coal, too?
And the wayer...
Oh. Is that your job?
No, no, but I, I like it that Chris Cole is appointed wayer of coal.
Yes.
So, I was hoping we could keep that.
Well, well, let's just do the inspector of lumber this, right now.
Okay.
Do I, do I have a second?
Is there a second?
Yes, I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye. So, we no longer will have that.
I only get a few joys in this little bit.
Okay, wait a minute here. They're going to eliminate that.
Right, the inspector of lumber.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, now, we only have two appointments for the planning commission. I'll make a motion for these two, three-year terms of Bob Richards and Jason Copel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, so that one's done. We're getting there. Um, we have another one of those positions, pound keeper, that's not required by the state, that, uh, Bill Humphries has been the pound keeper. I'm, I'll make, uh, a motion, I don't even know, I don't think we have a pound. I'll make a motion that we do away with the pound keeper, uh, appointment.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Oh, before we do away with the pound keeper, I thought there were instances where we have kept, uh, loose dogs up at the transfer station. Bill's been kinda taking care of that from time to time.
Yeah, I think we bore him at...
We have an animal control officer who...
Yeah, I think we bore him. If we have one that we have to keep overnight, we bore him up at, uh, what's it place up here?
Wolfpack.
Wolfpack. Wasn't it, isn't that what we do?
That's what happened at least once, I don't know.
I've never, I've never had that happen.
Okay. I was, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm trying, thinking, I hadn't seen a pound keeper come into play in five years, but I, it's only...
The good thing is, and, you know, we don't like Facebook, but the good thing is, Facebook helps pretty fast to reunite lost pets with their owners in town, so...
Well, why would a boot dish like you build as pound keeper?
Well, the thing of it is, is that our, our, our pound, our enclosure is not up to state specs. You know, you, you gotta have, I think you have to have somebody...
Yeah, well, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean it has to be a pound. I mean, we could use somebody's shoulder if necessary.
Yeah, which is not up to spec either. That's why we take it to Wolfpack, take them to Wolfpack.
You still may need somebody in charge at some point, for some situation.
I'm, I'm, I would, if, if you don't want them removed... I would, if you don't want to remove it, I would, I would draw it. But I, I think it's a position, I just think it's a position that's going to be there and never be us, never be identified. Animal control officer, on the other hand, is a...
Wouldn't that kind of go hand in hand in some way?
We, we have a different person that we, wasn't it Mr. Gudel?
Yes.
Is our, is our animal control?
I think if we're no longer using that enclosure anymore, then it would make sense to remove.
What's your pleasure?
What's your pleasure? What do you want? Want to keep it? I'll withdraw my motion and we'll, we'll keep it. Let me, let me make another motion.
I don't know how important it is, that's what I'm saying.
I'll make a motion, Bill's going to love this guy. I don't like him, he's the pound keeper. I'll make a motion that we appoint Bill Humphries as the pound keeper for one year.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I already crossed it out.
Okay, that one, that one didn't go very fast. Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint the recreation committee members, Eric Ramey and Josh Markey for one year, Luke Vadnis and Jesse Kaihill for two years, and Nicole Rice, Erica Knott, and Chad Fejey for three years.
I second that.
Good bunch. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll make a motion to appoint, to the Rutland Regional Planning Commissioner position, Jason Copel, for one year.
I'll second that.
Wait a minute.
I know your cheat sheet says Bob Richards, but he's a...
I can't make the meeting.
He's resigned and Jason has, gave us an email saying he was interested.
Yep.
Okay, so it's Jason...
Copel.
Spell.
C.O.P.A.L.
C.O.U.
U.
P.A.L., I believe.
Okay.
Good.
I guess we ought to vote on that.
We ought to, we got a second.
All those in favor?
Aye. There we go. Also, make a motion to have Rutland Regional Planning Commissioner alternate, Roseanne Van Lu.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
We have a, for the Rutland Transportation Council, we have a vacant position, so there's no one to appoint yet.
Wasn't Jason on that?
Jason's on that.
Aye.
No? He's on the bus.
Oh, right. The bus, which is different than the transportation.
No, she dropped out last, last year. It was vacant last year too.
I didn't realize that. We should have somebody on that.
That's the one with bridges and roads and getting your paving. It's a, it's a critical, that's why I just wanted to show it as being vacant and then one of the ones we maybe looked at, put ads out and that's an important position. Moving on to make a motion to appoint for the SWAC representative, Bonnie Rosati. That's her solid waste.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There's actually a paper, a paper to sign on that one too.
Is that by every, oh yes it is. Make a motion to appoint, Phil Standard as our tree warden.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, for our zoning board of adjustment, I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Durkey and Patrick Fraser for three-year terms, and, and, yeah, I'll just, and Roseanne Van Lu as an alternate for a three-year term.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Now we come to the last, the wayer of coal, which I heard there was some interest to have Chris Cole. So I'll make a motion to appoint Chris Cole as our wayer of coal.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You know, I always imagine him grabbing one of his kids and picking one and being like, yeah, that's thirty pounds.
Inspector lumber we got rid of.
I got a call at one...
That's all of them then?
Yeah.
Okay.
To inspect the fence.
When there's a, when there's an argument, we have to get on it.
He was an attorney that called me. I said, I'm going to have to look up what, what I'm supposed to do.
Parking lot, anything going on there? I can tell you that the town plan is out to the adjoining towns. So tomorrow we will set a, a date for the planning commission to have their hearing, which I think they can have it fifteen days after we set the date and advertise it. And then it will come here and I think you have to have at least, the board has to have at least one, if not two. I'll check that, I'll check my schedule, but we have to have at least one. So right now we're waiting for comment, the, the state, there's the town, the adjoining towns have the ability to comment for thirty days. And then, just so that we're not cringing on any of their stuff, infringing on any of their stuff. Okay? We should be on schedule to finish the town plan before the end of June and everything will be hunky-dory. We're back in the good graces for another seven years, which is a big relief. All right, local accomplishments?
You know, I got, I got nothing I think that would fit, but I was thinking when you talked about carrying it, if I could take just a second, very quick second. When we have, when there are emergencies in town, I'd just like to say how much I appreciate our staff. From the top to the bottom, when the water main broke, guys were out, the guys, everybody was on board. They took care of it in a couple of days, like Jason said, faster than they do in Florida who have, you know, how much equipment do they? Waste water, you know, there's old fuel coming through the system, they're on top of it, they know what to do and they handle it. So I'm very proud of our staff and everything they've done. They're, they're very skilled and very dedicated, so that's my thing.
And the biggest snowstorm we've had all winter and shorthanded our DPW guys.
Biggest snowstorm of the spring.
In the spring.
It's officially...
There's another one coming.
Just from my point of view, they did a fantastic job with that chief he just noted.
I would like to add something that I don't know if everybody knows this, but yes, they were shorthanded, but also our loader went in for service three days before, never come back, and it still hasn't come back. So they fought the storm, loading trucks and everything with the old worn-out backhoe, which is in very, very, very bad shape, so.
Why? Not that old.
No, no, the backhoe.
The one from the transfer station.
Okay, so us as a board, it should be our responsibility, and it is our responsibility to, we're going to have to think about updating that piece of equipment very soon.
When's it scheduled to be updated?
I imagine it should have been done about twenty years ago.
It's a pretty bad...
Yeah, it's rusted right through and, yeah.
It's a bad truck.
I know, so, and I don't know what the name of the grant is that, because Pultenley's used it a few times with, like, the older emission vehicles, there's a grant out there to like, help offset the cost for replacement. And you might know what the grant is, I don't know what it's called, but I know the town of Pultenley utilized that last year for replacing their backhoe. They tend to give you more than what traded value is.
Something like an emissions grant?
Yes.
Where they come in?
But you have to decommission it, so you usually got...
They come in and make sure it's decommissioned for you, so it can't be used, and they'll give you X dollars towards another machine. It's a substantial amount of money.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they said it's like more than what you would even get for resale or trade in.
Way more.
Yeah, it's insane.
Check that out. Thanks.
You're welcome.
That's good to know.
Yeah, that backhoe is rough.
Terrible, terrible rough. It's real bad. So on that note, we still have our loader back. And we were waiting for a phone call all day today as to where it is and what the diagnosis is. But we have another storm coming.
What's wrong with it?
There was something with the detox computer in it, which is, if you don't understand what this is, it's the new, it's the new systems, and basically they go into a detox mode over time and they, they, they like pretty much blow themselves up, smoke everything out. I mean, I'm sure you've seen it. And, and then they go all back to normal again, so.
So it's just modern service.
Bingo.
I really know it about the town crews, though, they have been working it well. Board around table.
That's basically what I have, is what I've said already.
I actually have something this week, a few things. So, since people reach out to me asking what had happened from the ideas from the revenue committee and why they haven't been placed or started, and I...
Is that what happened tonight?
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I don't know what the other suggestions are, maybe we should...
One of them was bargaining ears. One of them was, one of them was option tax.
Open up the transfer station.
Open up the transfer station, other towns.
Think we can do that.
So there's just kind of just, the board's just trying to figure out where to kind of golf with them or how to implement them or...
Yeah, we probably should review what we have and, and put that on a meeting, on a agenda.
Really got our vote in this to the grain, so we've got to ask the public if they have any ideas also. We can't be putting everything on Joel, the taxpayer.
However we do it, we're putting it on the pet taxpayer.
But, you know, other people, outsiders can help a little bit, somewhere along the line.
I thought we had a few meetings back, we did, we talked about revenue, what the revenue committee, and we came up with three or four items. Option tax that we are out and they're doing the study on now. One was, I thought it was even the transfer station and going to the one dollar was one. There were, there were multiple things I thought that we, we already, that we've, we've come out, we haven't talked about them in a while, but...
Yep, so that, that we've got. None of it's a lot of money. It's like these folks say, it's not much money. But if you can defray some costs, it adds up over time. You know, if you pick up enough pennies, you have a dollar bill in your pocket, you know?
It's still taxes somewhere, it's still revenue, revenue is taxes. But it's nice to spread it around to other people as well, but like the, the option tax would open that. When we find out that and have some information on that, we may want to re-present it. But so far it has been unwelcome. But anyways.
Well, everything is unwelcome and higher taxes are also unwelcome, so I don't really know what the answer is.
I get it.
You know?
Good point. I don't think we've ever taken from the revenue committee and said, here's the list they put together. I think we've talked it and generally talked it, picked about four items that we said we were going to...
We pretty much need like further review and just kind of really just...
We had some big items like, like water. We have such, we have so much water. Is there a way we could sell water? But we haven't, you know, we haven't put legs on it.
Car wash would be nice in town.
A car wash, that'd be a big...
Any, any business would be nice in town. Anything that would come to town and support our tax base would be greatly appreciated and welcome, no matter who, what, where.
Yeah, a couple more things. So ordinance regulating outdoor stores and junk, of junk and junk vehicles. Ordinance two thousand and five or one in effect to two thousand, how do we enforce this? And who do you contact to enforce it? Or, so it is a town ordinance, I had somebody reach out to me and they were asking, it said, they said it said to contact the police department, but they said that didn't feel right and I wanted to be like, hmm. But I don't know how.
It, it is an ongoing pain and there's, you, the state doesn't back you up. It's the old one man's trash is another man's treasure. If somebody's on their private, if they're on their private property, there's not a lot you can do. We've had one particular spot where there was three or four, there's trees growing through, through the vehicles and we can't get rid of them. It's, it's a real difficult thing to do, really difficult. Some of them were there before we had zoning, can't get rid of them, but it, it's almost impossible to get...
To enforce that.
To enforce that.
The economic development committee has one of the two items was looking at a possible modifying existing ordinance, ordinance or coming up with another one, having to do with, you know, whether someone lets their grass get three feet high and does that cause a, a risk or hazard or garbage that's sitting outside?
It was a health problem.
Right, there's, there's, there's one, we, we haven't put a ton of work in it, but it's on our, it's one of our, on our to-do list.
That's fine, I, I was assured, just did some research and I saw the ordinance and I didn't know.
The ordinance is not enforceable from the state. And for the, that's why the police don't do anything about it. It's pretty frustrating, but...
I'm sure I'll probably have more on that at a later date when I, the person that answers.
If there's a health problem, that's a different story. If there's a health, we can enforce that. And if there's, you know, garbage, obviously, it gets a little more dicey when it's people's...
Yeah, it's more like junk, they consider junk vehicles, but, right.
Somebody else thinks it's an investment.
Right. No, well, and somebody that's a, you know, a collector of junk over the years and, you know, family members that have, you know, lots of land I can stuff stuff off, or barns I can hide stuff in.
It's frustrating, it really is.
And then the last thing, somebody asked if roads and crosswalks were going to be potentially repainted before Memorial Day and they mentioned the turn lane to River Street and how that hasn't been touched in years.
The what?
Like the crosswalks and like road markings are going to be repainted potentially before Memorial Day. And they said, you know, like mentioned the turn to like River Street, how it's not existing.
Isn't it state, is state road, are they responsible for?
No, town, we usually do it.
Do we have a painter? Do we have?
Our town does paint crosswalks and they do a lot of striping.
But they don't do, they usually do it closer to the school. So it probably won't be...
Last year was a real bear trying to get anything going, right? Cause it rained almost every day.
I think we jam-packed ours in like a week and a half and that was brutal. It was like hundred degree days and we're out painting crosswalks and that's not fun.
That's, they try to do it closer so they're nice and bright for the start of the school year.
Right.
So they won't probably be done by, but that does, I mean, the one on River Street, the one on River Street, one on Main Street, but they're going to be paving that.
Not till twenty twenty-nine. Twenty twenty-nine, see, we've been holding off in twenty-four, we thought we're going to be paving, so we didn't want to go and people, let me, let me jump in, you bail me out here. So we, so we said, huh, let's not put new paint down and tear it up for new pavement. Then we're going to pave Route Four and twenty-five. Now it's out to twenty-nine.
And I know...
I think we're going to do something in summer.
And I understand that and it's frustrating because we did it last year in the village in like a week... and like a week later, it doesn't look like you did anything, so like, yeah, it stinks, but I can tell you like half the time, when I'm heading to work in the morning, I don't even know where the, the center line is, or the white line is.
Well, we should, we should do that.
And then, just the last part, wondering about a light on the flagpole in Veterans Park, I guess that's been asked for.
It's been, the light, well, I've already brought to Phil's attention, and we just need to get a hold of somebody to troubleshoot that. The light is on, and the light does hit the flag, so it's not an adjustment, but there seems like there is very, very little cattle power there, so I don't know if that bulb is going bad, I'm not.
Be a nice time to put an LED in there.
I'm not familiar with that, that type of light bulb.
Thank you.
Regarding the crosswalks, I don't know if you guys have noticed it, but the crosswalk between the pot shop and the bus stop, it's literally crumbling.
Yeah, it's.
The paint is crumbling and blowing away.
I don't think it's paint, it's that, that sheet stuff, we put that down, and it, that does, and a lot of that has to do with improper application of heat, so if you don't put the right amount of heat on it, then it crumbles, because we, same thing happened, we installed it at the end of Main Street in Poley, and it's been torn up already from plows, because we didn't put enough heat on it.
I just didn't know if you guys are aware of that.
Yeah, and you've got a, and if you put, keep heat on it too long, then it starts to bubble up, so it's like a, it's a gambling, you know, it's tricky.
It's pretty tough to do a hand torch also.
Yeah, and that's what we use, is a hand torch, so it's, yeah.
I just didn't know if you guys were aware of it, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have brought it to attention, I forgot.
No, that's, that stuff's notorious for crumbling, it's very tricky to apply, I mean, they say it's supposed to last longer than paint, but it's hard, it's not easy to install, that's for sure.
It's also slipperier than hat.
Oh, so is it paint when you put glass beads in it too?
Yeah.
Yeah, sitting there with a water cannon, putting glass beads down for reflection. That's all I got, so thank you.
Nothing today.
Okay.
You're gonna get a request from the Legion for the parade budget, you should get, you may even have it by now. I guess this is redundant now, that we're not gonna do anything, but one of the things that Legion wanted to do, is they're gonna invite recruiters to come to Spring Fling, and, and they wanted the free table, but I guess everybody's gonna be free to, now. Talked about Kerry. Would you check, the regional guy, and I'll give you his name, I don't have it, I didn't write it down, but the guy, the energy guy, he has, he's got us listed as having a grant for electric plug-ins, and I didn't know if it was the ones that are going into the, into the park, or there's something additional, the parking ride, so I didn't know, would you check with him and see what, because he said it's there, the money's there, waiting for us to request it, so.
At Rutland Regional?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll give you his name.
The, the company that is doing, yeah, the company that's doing it, they did get a grant to install.
Yeah, okay, so maybe that's what he's talking about, but if it's extra, we, maybe we can put a couple more in too, and if, you know, if, there's a revenue source right there, actually.
Okay. Ready for the expenditures? I'll make a motion to pay the payroll of thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Now, I've got two warrants, so I'll make a motion to pay warrant number one for fifty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and nine cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. The second warrant is, I'll make a motion to pay warrant number two for ten thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and eight cents.
Second.
What's that about?
That is to child support, it was a payment that was separate.
Check and make sure that we all sign two, because I didn't sign two, I know I.
Oh, yeah, you must have missed one.
I did.
There's, there's two of them to sign, yeah.
I think everybody else got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And the checkbook status is six hundred and two thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
We have an executive session, is it?
Make a motion to go into executive session under personnel for one VSA, three thirteen A three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.